All this meeting and the Clay County Commission to order, we will begin with our invocation from Pastor Sean McCullough, if you please proceed.
Thank you. Would you guys pray with me? Father, we just thank you for today, God. Can we just take a second to pause and just remember how abundantly gracious you've been to us, God, that you've caused your son to shine once again today, God. You've caused your breath to fill our lungs, that no matter what today has brought us, no matter what this week has brought us, or we feel like this life has brought us, Jesus, that we just stop and just say, "Thank you for your graciousness." God, and you are a God who cares. God, you care about your creation, you care about this world, you care about our country, God. You care about Clay County, God, and the people in it, God. God, we thank you, and we're honored that you have asked us to be a part of this project that you have, this beautiful creation that you've created and you've asked us to come alongside it, to subdue it, God, to fill it, to multiply throughout it, Jesus. So I pray that we would just come into one mind today, God, that we would be unified, Holy Spirit, that you would just come and bring us into alignment with your will for Clay County, God, that we would grow in love for one another, that the people of Clay County would grow to love one another, to be more neighborly towards one another, Jesus, that Clay County might look more like heaven, that people around Kansas City would start to ask, "What's happening in Clay County?" And we could answer, "The God of the universe is moving. People are loving each other." Or we thank you, we love you. We pray all these things in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit that moves today. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Here. That brings us to the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion for approval of this evening's agenda? Okay, let me... There we go.
Move to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. Are there any comments or changes to our agenda? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
That brings us to ceremonial matters. Administrator?
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for proclamation 2023-160, which is proclaiming this week as Public Service Recognition Week. The first week of May since 1985 has been designated as Public Service Recognition Week, where we take the opportunity to recognize and thank public servants from working at the national level, the state level, the county level, and the local level. And so tonight, during Public Service Recognition Week, we get to celebrate the best of the best of the Clay County staff. Our staff is what makes the quality of life in Clay County as exceptional. All our employees, no matter what their role is, impact the lives of 250,000 people each and every day. The passion and the purpose of our dedicated employees contribute to the quality of life that our residents have. This year, we've implemented an employee recognition program to run alongside Public Service Recognition Week, and this provides us the opportunity to highlight the exceptional work done by members of our organization. Nominations were received from department directors, supervisors, managers, fellow county employees, and office holders. And tonight, we would like to present awards in four different categories. Our first category is Excellent Customer Service Award, and we have two nominations, excuse me, we had a lot of nominations across the county, but we have two recipients that we would like to recognize this evening. Our first recipient is Janice Carter, who's the administrative assistant here in the courthouse. You know, it's often said that someone may not remember what you did for them, but they will remember how you made them feel. Janice doesn't just do her job, she doesn't just answer the phone, she makes sure that every person who calls the county or comes to the administration desk has what they need. Even if it's not a county service or a county department, Janice will work to find out where the individual needs to go for resolution and assistance. You know, she's actually fondly referred to as janice.com. She goes above and beyond the call of duty to help customers. Every day, she has a big smile on her face and is welcoming to all who find their way to the third floor. The nominator stated, "Janice has a heart the size of Clay County and is passionate about providing service to all that need assistance." So I'm going to ask Janice to please come forward and receive this award and ask everyone to join me in congratulating Janice in receiving the Excellent Customer Service Award. Don't worry, we're going to get you all in a group picture here at the end. Thank you. Our second recipient of Excellent Customer Service Award is Zachary Gibb. He's our network security manager in our IT department. You know, many times, staff receive requests for information, and good customer service means an accurate and timely response. Yet there are times when simply responding to the request is not the best for the customer. Zach continually seeks to understand what the request is being made of him and looks for the ultimate best solution to meet the needs of the customer. As an example, just recently, a citizen requested video footage around the time they were at the courthouse to determine if an individual had violated an expartee. Zach did research and found it was in the best benefit to the citizen to go to the police department and tell the detective their concerns, so any video evidence uncovered could be submitted for prosecution by law enforcement with a direct chain of evidence. This approach also saved the citizen the cost of a sunshine request. Zach went above and beyond the initial request to ensure that he provided the citizen with the best options to meet their needs. Unfortunately, Zach could not be here with us this evening, but we certainly want to congratulate him, and we'll make sure that he gets his award. The second category that we'd like to recognize is our Thoughtful Innovation Award, and we have two recipients that are receiving awards and recognition tonight. Matt Covey is in our Parks Operations Department, and learning is an important value within our organization, and one component of learning is working smarter, not harder. Matt is a living example of this philosophy, and when he has the opportunity to help others work smarter, he steps forward. Just this past January, Matt shared his technical skills with others by conducting a basic welding class for county staff. Nineteen county employees from across the organization gained a new skill that will benefit their departments and our organization. So please join me in congratulating Matt in receiving the Thoughtful Innovation Award. Our second recipient for the Thoughtful Innovation Award is Johnny Zooklin. He's the shop supervisor in the Highway Department. Our employees are good stewards of taxpayer money. John is insistent that the department's vehicles and equipment be kept in excellent condition, and he is equally vigilant in controlling costs. So when the Highway Department had two, 2014, a lot of numbers, Ford F-350 pickups that were losing power and would not accelerate, John went to work to determine the cause. Maintenance codes on the vehicles show that there was a problem with the exhaust system. After spending some time checking out various parts of the exhaust system, John narrowed down possible problems. However, due to limited staffing in the department, it was decided that the best option was to send the vehicles out for repair to a vendor. When the vehicles were delivered to the vendor, John described the symptoms and research that had been completed, and specifically asked the vendor to start by checking the EGR coolers to see if they were plugged up before starting any other work on the vehicles. After a few days, the vendor called John and said that the entire exhaust system needed to be replaced at a cost of $7,000 per vehicle. John asked if they had checked the EG cooler. The vendor had not, so John asked again that they check the EGR system to see if the cooler needed to be cleaned or replaced to avoid any unnecessary costly repairs. The vendor called back, said they had not checked the EGR cooler, but the entire system needed to be replaced. This was not acceptable to John. He brought the pickups back to the Highway Department, rechecked his research, and came to the same conclusion, that the EGR cooler was plugged. The parts to replace the EGR cooler could be obtained for $553 and could be replaced in each vehicle in less than a day. John ordered the parts, cleaned the system, and installed the new parts, saving the county over $13,000. So please join me in congratulating Johnny on his, the Thoughtful Innovation Award. Our third category is Collaborative Teamwork Award, and we have two recipients in this category, an individual and an entire team. Our individual is Erin Kegay, our Natural Resources Supervisor. When the new Conservation Educator for Clay County from Missouri Department of Conservation reached out to Erin, he jumped at the chance to collaborate on developing programs for field trips and experiences for teachers, along with providing information for the Conservation Educator to help local citizens utilize outdoor spaces. Since the initial meeting, numerous local teachers and their students have had field trips at Smithville that has led students to a greater understanding of the characteristics of lake, prairie, and forest ecosystems, plus what animals utilize those spaces. From identification to knowledge of adaptation, Erin and his team have impacted local students in a positive educational way. Through this collaboration, students leave with a greater knowledge because Erin has made it a priority to spend a couple of hours to help the students gain hands-on knowledge. Please join us in congratulating Erin on this award. Our next recipient in this award is our Facilities Team, which has 15 members. So it's not unusual to receive good customer service from an individual in a department. However, it is unusual receiving outstanding customer service from every member of a large department, especially when they are being asked to complete heavy lifting, and we mean literally heavy lifting. So we have an example from one department that made this nomination for our Facilities Team. The nomination states, "The Facilities Team has performed above and beyond in the area of service to internal customers. Our office contacts facilities management on numerous occasions for a variety of needs, from running toilets to burned-out light bulbs to inoperable secure doors. Whether we sent an email for service or called for immediate notice, staff was always friendly and helpful. Not only has any staff, not only has any staff member been unsurling or make it seem that any request, no matter how small, was an inconvenience. During a recent move in our office area, assistance from facilities staff was required. The staff who responded listened to what was needed and acted upon the requests. This happened every time staff responded, and if they were short on staff, the supervisors would respond, and again, without any indications that they were being inconvenienced. The number of times that facilities has been contacted for assistance is too numerous to list, but here's just a few examples. Tracy Johnson took the time to help determine the cost of mailing a sunshine request. We didn't have an appointment and interrupted her normal duties. She stopped what she was doing and got the information we needed and made us feel like she was truly happy to help. Kathy Pierce is always ready to help with billing information. Melanie Watt, Lee Pogue, and Lance are always responsive when staff is short and items need to be addressed sooner rather than later, such as reported security or safety issues. During their project, Melanie would regularly check in to make sure her staff was able to help remove items identified as trash or surplus so that the new cubicles could be in place. The night cleaning staff assisted in the job of moving multiple items for a big shred project that was underway. The list can go on and on of the assistance provided by the Facilities Team, and not once has anyone expressed exasperation with the multiple requests that they receive. They always have a smile on their face and are willing to help whatever needs to be done. So I'm going to ask everyone here from our Facilities Team to come forward and be recognized for the outstanding work they do as a team in collaborating and providing internal service. Yeah, yeah. Might have to give someone... How about Lee, Lee? I would do Lee.
Yeah, I can move. We're good. Thank you.
Don't go far. Our final award this evening, we call it the AAA Award for Attitude, Aptitude, and Adaptability. We have one recipient for this award this year, and that is John Davis. When the county was faced with staffing shortages at the airport, including an airport manager, Deputy Parks Director John Davis was assigned to the airport. While every job description has the proverbial "other duties as assigned," John accepted this assignment with commitment, professionalism, and a dedication to serving the residents of Clay County. John was asked to keep the wheels on and keep the facility operational while the county pursued our options. John has done more than just keep the wheels on. He's addressed items noted in a 2022 MoDOT inspection report, updated the emergency response manual, provided key information to first responders, updated, and sorry, provided standard operating procedures for cash management and hangar leases, established a courtesy car policy, and updated the credit card point-of-sale system, and that's just to name a few of the things that he did. We received this comment from a tenant. "I wanted to drop you a quick email and let you know that John, the interim, seems to be doing a great job. Even in these cold temps and inclement weather, he is going above and beyond what would normally be expected as someone that is just helping fill in. He knows the airport is short-staffed, and he is out working right alongside the guys to help clear the sidewalks and runway of snow. His presence during this time of transition is truly appreciated, and we sincerely appreciate the work that John has done in his other duties as assigned, as he has helped us at the airport as the interim airport manager." So please join me in congratulating John Davis for the AAA Award. Now, I'd like to ask all our recipients, don't go far, John, all our recipients to come up. We'd like to put them sort of here in the circle. We'd ask the Commissioners if you all could stand and kind of move in, and we'll try and take a very large group picture. Okay, you're going to have to make a few rows.
That's a good idea.
Again, I'd like just to take a quick moment to thank all our county employees, and certainly want to congratulate our recipients on the 2023 Public Service Recognition Awards.
That brings, that brings us to the next item on our agenda this evening. That would be public comments. Are there any members of the public who'd wish to make any comments at this time? I see one person rising. Just as a reminder, please, when you come up to speak, make sure that you push the button, that the green collar is lit up on the microphone, state your name, and speak clearly into the microphone. Please proceed.
My name is Bobby Oaks. I live at 13, take it back, 1631 75th Street, end of Platt Purchase Road, and thank you, guys. I'm here to give you guys an atta boy and atta girl for answering my emails and preventing me from being embarrassed because I was going to come and talk to you about my situation on the road. With it being Platt Purchase Road, I didn't realize it was really a street, and so when I saw road, I thought, oh, it must be Clay County on one side and Platt on the other side. And so thank you for sending me to the right people down in Kansas City, and then, so I'm going to have to show up at the Kansas City Council meetings now and see what's going on, but I appreciate it. Thank you very much for helping and sending back the emails. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other, anyone else wanting to make any kind of public comment this evening? Seeing none. That brings us to our Consent Agenda. Administrator? Oh, wait a minute. Is there a motion on our consent agenda? Was that...? Yeah, I thought so. I saw you hitting your button. I was, you got me going. Okay. Administrator?
The Consent Agenda allows the Commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the Commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a Commissioner requests that an item be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately. This evening, there are two items on the Consent Agenda for the Commission. Resolution 2023-163 is approving invoice payments from the period of April 26 to May 4 for 279 invoices that total $629,139.85. And Resolution 2023-166 is approving a sole-source vendor and term and supply contract with Chaplain Tire Recycling for non-playgrounds, scrap tire material, molded picnic tables, and park benches for the Parks Department.
Is there a motion? Commissioner Wagner?
Yes, move to approve tonight's Consent Agenda.
Motion has been made for approval of the evening's Consent Agenda. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
That brings us to our regular agenda. First item on our regular agenda is 2023-164. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-164 is approving invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from April 26 to May 4 for 13 invoices totaling $3,955.86.
Is there a motion? Commissioner Wagner?
Move to approve 2023-164.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-164. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
I'm going to accuse myself.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. That brings us to 2023-165. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-165 is approving the Clay County Collector's Report and recommendations of tax sales surplus of certain parcels. Collector O'Reilly is here to provide information to the Commission.
Please proceed.
Barbara O'Reilly, Collector, I bring to you Resolution 2023-165. This is the final distribution of funds. I request that you instruct the Treasurer to distribute these to the school fund, as there was no one claiming these funds.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion related to 2023-165? Commissioner Wagner?
Move to approve 2023-165.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-165. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Next on our regular agenda is 2023-161. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-161 is approving Hardware Services Addendum Agreement with Vermont Systems, and Director Driscoll is here to provide information to the Commission.
Please proceed.
Mike Driscoll, Parks Director. This addendum to the Vermont Systems Agreement we already have in place is for the addition of eight mobile units to process debit and credit cards at our fee collection stations out in the park. It'll allow all this to be calculated together and the fees processed through and integrated all into one, one system, and basically just makes the recording and accounting easier and the convenience of being able to take credit cards and debit cards at the fee collection booths. We can also use it at some retail sales at the campground entrances where we sell ice and firewood. And we'd like to have this approved as quickly as possible so we can get them and get them in place. It is for eight units leased monthly at the rate of $30 a month for each, so $2,880 per year, with a one-time training fee of $350. And basically, that's all we're asking for is the approval for this so we can get them out and hopefully get them going before Memorial Weekend.
Very good. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion related to 2023, excuse me, 161? Commissioner Wagner, I'm sorry.
Move to approve 2023-161.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-161. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. That brings us to the last item on our regular agenda, 2023-148. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-148 is a consideration of Clay County nominees for the Kansas City ATA Board of Commissioners. Pursuant to state statute, the County Commission nominates and presents to the Mayor of Kansas City three names for consideration that would represent Clay County on the Kansas City ATA Board. Included in this resolution are three names, Deb Herman, Sabian Yanez, and Pam Mason.
Since I put forward these names, as Commissioners may recall, there was one other name that was removed, and Sabian Yanez, excuse me, was inserted. So is there any discussion, any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion related to 2023-148? Commissioner Wagner?
Yes, move to approve 2023-148.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-148. Any further... Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Whittington?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
That completes our regular agenda. That brings us to discussion items. The first one is comp plan update presentation. Administrator?
Yes, as the commission may recall, included in the 2023 budget is the project of updating the twenty, excuse me, 2008 Comprehensive Plan. And Director Jones is here to provide information to the commission about that and what that process would look like.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning Director. So the 2023 budget included the update to the 2008 Comprehensive Plan, which is the land use document for the unincorporated sections of Clay County. So the county sent out a request for proposals. A committee reviewed those proposals and is recommending Olson Studio be the consultant firm for this project. And Shelby Ferguson with Olson Studio is here tonight to provide the commission a little more detail on what that process would look like.
Good evening, commissioners. Shelby Ferguson, Senior Planner with Olson Studio. I want to first off just thank you all for your time this evening. As Mr. Jones mentioned, I just want to take a few minutes just to kind of walk you through what the comprehensive plan process would be with your county as we would move through that process as selected and approved by you all. So with that, I apologize. Okay. So just a real quick overview, just for anyone that may not know exactly what a comprehensive plan is. We really view this as a living document that really, really sets that stage for your county to provide a vision for the future. We look at it as that that future or that future vision is really set at the community scale. We really engage during that period, so it's at the community scale created by the community and for the community. It also helps set us, set you all up with shared goals and desires based on interaction with the community as well as the commission and staff. So we get that overall understanding of what those goals and desires are that really starts to set that roadmap for the future, looking at future development and growth for the next 10, 15, 20 years. And so that really then provides an implementable and relatable plan to what the county is wanting to move forward in. And it's something also, as I mentioned, it's more of a living document as it's revisited often so that it can maintain relevance to what the needs and the desires are. So with that, just moving forward a bit to let you know, so as mentioned, Olson Studio would be leading the effort. But here on this slide, we really show ourselves with our two subconsultant teams as well. Canyon Research Southwest will provide a market and analysis research report that really helps us shape understanding of where the market trends are, how, what things are needed and necessary within the county, and just how land can develop in that next 10 to 20 year timeframe. We've also brought on Venice Communications within our team. They will really help with the media outreach and is local within the KC metro region, has already established relationships with a lot of the media outlets. So they'll really help us during those engagement times of really getting out to all entities to make sure that your constituents are aware of the process and how they can participate. And then we really see you all as a big, the biggest part of this, driving it forward, working with you all during that engagement phase, but also through the planning process. So and within this, we have a much larger team. There were about four of us who came and spoke with staff previously, but we have a much larger within Olson and Olson Studio planners, transportation planning background, as well as engagement specialists that'll help us move this process forward. So really, we break our process down into six phases. Up here, we've got the five. Engagement really, really runs the extent of the entire process. So we break it down by discover, plan, refine, strategize, and sustain. I'll quickly go through these, but really what we see this as is discover allows us to start that market analysis research, start to look at your existing plans. We understand that you all have done great work up to this point. So we look at where you have been, where you are now, and how we can move you forward through that discover phase. Then we start to really take that information that we understand and start to go out to the public, work with you all in a county leadership forum. So that would be with you all and staff and also Planning Commission so that we can really start to understand what those shared goals and desires are. Then we move into the plan phase, which is where we start to really define what those recommendations are. But we see it as more of start dumping in all of our ideas, funnel. We really start to understand and see where those recommendations can lie. And then we jump into that refine, which is really vetting out all of those recommendations and funneling it down to really what sticks, what makes sense, what is most implementable and realistic for your county. And then strategize is us coming back to you all, showing you what we've come up with as well as coming for adoption. And then that sustain is providing you all that implementable and relatable plan that you can hit the ground running with, use it daily, as well as staff can use it daily as well. We want to make sure that we provide you a document that's not just going to sit on the shelf. So then really throughout that process, we do our engagement. We really see this as what we focus on of our philosophy of engagement is, you know, we want to be flexible with it. We, at the beginning, set out a plan, an engagement plan of what we would like to do, what tools we will use. But we also understand that we need to be flexible in what that plan and how we engage is. If we're not receiving feedback from a certain part of your county, then we'll pivot and find a new tool or find another way that we can start to engage and make sure that we really are getting a full cross-section of voices from your county. And then the way we see our engagement is that it really starts to empower the community, starts to empower your constituents, that they've had a voice, that they really are building themselves as those champions to move that plan forward at the end when it's adopted. And that really also gets us to that consensus piece of having that full buy-in from staff, from you all, the commission, and as well as your constituents. And so we'll do this through multiple tools. As I mentioned, we have that toolbox, but initially what we're proposing is having a few multiple in-person pop-up events. We want to make sure that we're going to where people are. We understand that not everyone can participate online, but not everyone can attend a traditional public open house. So we like to make sure that we're getting out to where people are. And so we'll do that in those pop-up events. Then we'll have a visioning workshop that's more focused with internal staff as well as our stakeholder committee. And that starts to really vet out what is that vision for your county. And then we'll have a county-wide planning charrette. And so what that really is, is we start to really draw the, on the maps, really bring pens, pencils, paper, all of that, and just look at the maps, look at where you have opportunities, where are your issue areas. And then following that event, we do a public open house where everyone can really come in and look at what that stakeholder group and our team have put together in terms of recommendations. Then all of that information, again, we understand that everyone can come to a public open house, so we put that online. All the same materials that were shown at that public open house are then put online and up for two weeks through a program that allows us to have a commenting and dialogue period for anyone who would like to participate in that for two weeks. Throughout the process, we'll also provide outreach and marketing materials, social media, press releases, again, really relying on Venice Communications to help push that information out so that people really understand where they're going with it. And then we'll just really rely again on those stakeholder groups, as I mentioned. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those for you. I know a quick overview, so.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Whittington?
Yeah, this will be for the entire county, right? Not just unincorporated Clay County?
Correct.
Okay. I'd like to make sure that the riverfront, Missouri riverfront, is a priority in this also. It's huge untapped potential for the county, so I just want to make sure that we take a good look at the riverfront.
Definitely. And I should also mention in there, we have scoped as well, we will be working with each of the cities within Clay County. So we would like to, we plan to sit down with each of them, really understand where their comprehensive plans are, what their growth patterns, and what their growth expectations are so that we can start to make sure that when we're looking at the county's land use and growth, that they go and coincide together, or at least will not contradict each other. So.
One of the things that I would like to mention is that as we reach out to municipalities, that we don't limit ourselves to just the larger entities, but, you know, obviously some of the, some of the smaller municipalities and townships and villages, it's important to reach out to everyone. So I just wanted to kind of underscore that.
Yes, and that too. We understand that those municipalities or even villages may not have a comprehensive plan, but at least still understanding what their growth expectations are and what their plans are moving forward in the next 10, 15 years is very important to this as well. So we do plan to engage them.
Yeah, that's kind of a follow-up to Commissioner Whittington's point that it be all-inclusive as possible.
Yes.
With that, Commissioner Lawson, you are recognized.
Just one quick question. What kind of a timeframe are we looking at for this?
Yes, so we would hope to, following this, then go for approval, and then we would have kickoff once we get things settled. So I would look at probably having our kickoff internally, probably looking at June, and then we look at a 12 to 14-month time period with that as well. But if there is, we'll work with staff as well. If there is a specific time that that's needed and required to be adopted, we will definitely strive for that. But typical processes for us are 12 months. We have done them on a nine-month, 10-month timeframe. Actually, Olson Studio, myself, leading as project manager, just completed Liberty's Comprehensive Plan. Back in March, it was adopted, and we did that on about a 10-month timeframe. It's very doable, but I would recommend at least a 12-month timeframe, so.
By the way, now that you mention it, you had mentioned that you guys have done work for Liberty. Could you maybe mention some of the other entities that you might, because you guys do a lot of work around here?
Sure.
Just give us, and I don't expect an exhaustive list, but if you could give us an idea of some of the other entities within Clay County that you've worked with.
Sure. So I personally have worked with Gladstone. That was a few years ago, but the rest of the team not has, I mean, they've done other projects. But myself personally, as a project manager, I've worked with Gladstone, as well as we've worked in Parkville, in Riverside. I mean, they're not all comprehensive plans necessarily, but we have done multiple, and I guess actually I say Parkville and Riverside, and those are not within your county, but I'm thinking Northland, sorry about that. But Liberty, and I'm trying to think who else we may have. We do work in North Kansas City as well. So yeah, like you said, we do, we do various things within Olson, but Olson Studio specifically has really focused in the Liberty, Gladstone, Kansas City, and then North Kansas City areas.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, that would conclude this discussion item. And that brings us to our next item, which is Emergency Communication Funds Review. Administrator?
Yes, our next item for discussion is the Emergency Communication Funds Review that was performed by our auditor, and Auditor Herbert is here to provide information to the commission.
Please proceed.
Yes, good evening. Victor Herbert, Clay County Auditor, and wanted to take a little bit, it's in your packet, the audit I did, essentially internal audit of our 911 fund. But I'll be rather brief as well, but really just wanted to give you a quick presentation overview of that audit and put a little PowerPoint together to go over that for you for your consideration. A little background, we had a discussion, the commission here not too long ago. Commissioner Lawson brought that forward, and it's been on our minds for some time now, for some years, this issue with funding our 911 fund, our communication, emergency communications fund. And so in looking at that, and also further questions from administrator and commission, and looking at this from a budgetary standpoint, that's really what generated this audit. And so I thought it'd be good for me to put a little bit of a finer point on the numbers, you know, rather than the kind of high-level, big-picture discussions we've previously had. So with that, go ahead and dive here. And essentially, as with the audit in the report, I started with revenues. And essentially, the bottom line right now is that we have in place, the only mechanism to fund our 911 service contributions to the regional system with the Mid-America Regional Council is from a fee on landline telephones. On April 6, 1982, voters approved a 2% tariff on landline telephones, and we haven't changed anything since then. And so obviously, of course, with changes, everyone moving to cellphone and mobile devices, we've seen a depletion of that revenue source. In fact, it's essentially been cut roughly in half, as you can see, from in 2000, I went back to over north of $400,000 at $418,000 to only $218,000 in the most recent year of 2022. And so it stands to reason that that trend will continue. My role, I'm very aware and engaged in this process because my office actually receives bills, payments, checks, I should say, from telephone companies, and we audit compliance if the calculation is correct. And it's pretty straightforward, 2% of the bill, that should be the correct calculation. They actually have accounting firms that do this for them. They take a 2% administrative fee. We have not uncovered any issue with that, just so you know, over the years since I've been here. Some larger payments actually do go directly to the treasurer from some of our larger telecommunications providers. So that's really how these funds get paid, but they do go directly to the county. So that's really our current state of landline telephones. And I should have said at the onset, feel free to stop me at any point, ask a question, but I do have at the end a spot for questions and discussion. So the next part about revenues, however, not only do we have landline telephones, we do have a small amount from a fee that the legislature approved, I believe in 2018, a 3% fee on prepaid phones. Essentially, you know, those, that you don't really have a monthly cellphone bill, but you have a prepaid phone. And that money does not come directly to the county, goes through an entity called the Missouri 911 Service Board. They do take a 1% administrative fee on that, so not a ton amount. But as you can see, I excluded from the previous analysis the total revenues, so this is in addition roughly $50,000 a year. So all in, you know, we're only at $270,000, give or take, a year to fund our 911 obligations. Interesting note here, I think I would add is that, that I found is that there is actually only one county in the entire state of Missouri who does not have this. Essentially, you had to basically opt in, sign an agreement to receive this, and that's our neighbor's Platt County. They actually do not get this prepaid fee, but there's actually legislation. We'll see if that, you know, truly gets approved to go to the voters because they've already passed a deadline, they just approve it by the commission to be able to accept this prepaid fee. So every county in Missouri, besides Platt County, does actually get this prepaid revenue. So now let's look to the expenditure side. Essentially, we have an agreement. Most recent agreement, contract I found is from 2013, and is with Mid-America Regional Council to fund our regional 911 system. And basically, it's broken out, all the tax and jurisdictions by population are allocated the cost of that total amount. So for us, the 2023 budget is $1.2 million, and that has increased, you know, more than double since 2000. And even if we include the 2023 budget, it would be effectively triple from going from $300,000 to today, $1.2 million. So obviously, the expenditures are, you know, vastly outpacing the revenue source we have. With that, I guess I will turn to the, so how do we address this need? We address it with general revenue. That's the shortfall. There are a few tax and jurisdictions in Missouri that do not, not a few, actually, quite a bit, that have no dedicated 911 funding source and do it all through general revenue sources. But for us, we're supplementing the difference to shortfall from landline telephones, and it is up in this budget to $1 million. We put about 2/3 of that on regular sales tax allocations and 1/3 on as-needed transfers. Last year, it was $729,000, and it's increased quite a bit since 2000. And really only started, as you can see, in 2007, though, but $4.5 million over that at time span that we have. at time span that we have subsidized our 911 fund with general revenue, which mostly is in the form of our sales tax, our, you know, 0.75% general sales tax. So really, the last slide here, so let's talk about options. As I mentioned, some counties, I put a map in my, it's a little bit of an outdated map, I put that in my report that I got from the Missouri 911 Board, about how each county in Missouri does it, where it's kind of all over the place, it's not uniform by any means. I would say it's about split between counties that do a sales tax, another sales tax for 911. You can go up to 1% per statute to do that for centralized dispatch, meaning for, you know, police, fire, ambulance, medical response. You can do the landline fee, as you know, and you can do the subscriber fee, which is a fee on, to be clear, it's on a telephone number. So any device that has the, you know, capacity with a telephone number, a line that can dial 911, but essentially no longer a landline, but a mobile or digital device. And so you can go up to a dollar, doesn't have to be a full dollar, but I will say that 10 counties in the state of Missouri have done the subscriber fee since this law also passed, 2018. All of them are set at $1. Five of those counties, actually, half of them are near Clay County in the region, Jackson County being the one we're most familiar with. And looking at, essentially, trying to estimate what that revenue would effectively mean for Clay County, you can do the math pretty quickly. If we were to presume that we have 250,000 phone numbers, that's about our population, you would get 3 million dollars a year. The budget, as you recall, for Mark 911 is 1.2 million, so that's more than what we need at present, but at the same time, the Mark costs are increasing year after year. But the key question is determining how many phone numbers there are. And so I tried to do some research into that, there isn't the best sources of information out there. So I went to the 911 Service Board in the state of Missouri, and they provided some examples of those 10 counties that have done the $1 fee. And looking at all the counties, and Jackson County in particular, you can basically, you know, make an analogy from that, that it's actually pretty close to about the total population. With essentially, when they have over 700,000 residents, and they actually have 8.2 million dollars a year in the most recent year, our equivalent is actually very close to 3 million. So that seems like a reasonable estimate, but you wouldn't really know until it's actually approved and the funds are coming in. So that's essentially it, you know, something more to describe about that provision, it has to be used for 911 service, so it is a restricted special fund. But at the same point, the budgetary impact is it frees up those transfers that can be used for any other county purpose. There is importantly, a provision in there that you have to submit plans to the 911 Board for official consolidation of dispatch services. And certainly, the county's taken steps in that direction with co-location through Sheriff Aiken, with our American Rescue Plan Act funds partnering with the cities of Gladstone and Liberty for co-location, and getting on the same computer aided dispatch, emergency medical dispatch software system as our municipalities in Clay County. And we've had discussions with Mark, as a board member, I've had discussions with the 911 contact there, as well as the 911 Service Board for the state, and that seems like that is something that would pass the test. But that's just something to be know, it's very specific, that if you pass this, you have to submit a plan, and within a year, they actually confirm and check that you've in fact put it in place, otherwise, you no longer get those revenues. So there could be potential efficiencies there, but my standpoint, the conclusion I made in this review, is that given that we already have sales taxes, and that even an eighth of a cent of a sales tax for law enforcement generates 5.5 million dollars, the $1 maximum on a subscriber fee might be something for the commission to consider. Or consider to, you know, continue to fund with general revenue, that's certainly in your, you know, however you see fit, but Commissioner Lawson brought this up, as well as the commission, I've seen it myself in working on the budget. So essentially, my conclusion is, is that this might be something that you want to look at. I know we've talked with fourth council about how, what the next steps are, has to go on about, has to be approved. Is this something that we can even, you know, legally pursue, given all the nuance involved with it? So that's up for determination, and we've talked also about maybe, you know, putting this issue on about that we're already going to have, so that we don't have to pay for the extra expense of that election. That's really, you know, sort of my comments there. I will leave you at this though, speaking of those nuance and strange things with, that we tend to have in Clay County, and really just all the structures of Missouri counties. Excelsior Springs actually has their own landline fee. They went to the maximum of 15%. That statute says you can go up to 15% or 75 cents per line, the greater of the two. They did 15%. And so they are not part of Clay County's landline fee, and they actually pay Mid-America Regional Council separately. So that might be a, something to investigate of, how do we, you know, navigate that, should we pursue this route? But I imagine their revenues are also depleting, and their costs are also going up. So that's something to put out there. But with all that, I am happy to answer any questions, but otherwise, submit the report to you, and it's also available publicly on the website and within this agenda.
Commissioner Lawson, I believe you introduced this subject, so if you would like to start the discussion, please proceed.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's something we've got to address, because we're bleeding every month when we're having to pay this fee, and, you know, like we're saying, the landlines just aren't going to support it anymore. So I guess I would, I think, thank you very much for this, because it's pretty comprehensive, it spells it out real easily for anybody to understand, so, even me. So I would ask you, Mr. Counselor, what is the next step?
I appreciate that. So I certainly agree with the auditor that the problem is identified, right? There's not enough funding for what we're doing. The fix is, in my view, unfortunately, really complicated, and probably much harder than it should be, which is not to say impossible. Chapter 190 is the chapter and the statutes that deal with this primarily. That's 167 pages. There are at least four primary funding mechanisms in Chapter 190, one of which we're using, the current one under subsection 305 is what we're using. The other three all would raise substantially more money, but all carry kind of problematic implementation issues. And that's because the legislature has made it very clear that consolidated dispatch is the policy priority. So we're dealing with, how do we fund 911 services? The legislature gives us multiple ways to do that, but they tie it very clearly, in my reading, to consolidated dispatch. And so, you know, I'm not in law enforcement, but I assume that many of the counties that have been able to implement some of these changes are probably smaller counties, with the, I know with the exception of Jackson, of course, smaller counties that probably have consolidated dispatch to begin with, likely one source of consolidated dispatch. My understanding, and Commissioner Johnson, I think if you can help me if I get it wrong, each agency in the county has the ability to operate what's called a PSAP. And my understanding is there are currently eight in operation in the county. In order to implement, so the, I mean, arguably maybe the best one is the 455 fee, the dollar per unit fee, might be the simplest or best approach. My reading of the statute is that within a year, we would have to, we would have to either be engaged in consolidated dispatch, or with a very clear plan to have it done, and at most, we get one extension, at most it would have to be done in 18 months. We're not anywhere close to that with all eight of our entities. And the part of the problem is, in order, under the statute, in order to go this route, we have to, we can't do both our 305 dollars that we're currently receiving, and start receiving the 455 dollars, which means essentially, we would, I think it's within the calendar year that we pass it, we would have to eliminate our 305 dollars. But if we don't have the consolidated dispatch in place after 18 months, it would be that, it doesn't say there's a process to, for another extension, or to capture the dollars, we just lose it. And we would, in arguably the worst case scenario, is we'd be out of both funding mechanisms. And this is, to me, there's a larger political issue that we'd have to work through, and that's really consolidated dispatch. To me, it isn't, we pass it, then we fix consolidated dispatch. To me, it's the other way around. We address consolidated dispatch when we feel like we've got that plan together, then let's go get a countywide funding mechanism. Because there are additional problems, one of which is Excelsior Springs, because I think there's some language in the statute that would indicate that we can't do this unless Excelsior Springs agrees to give up their fee, which would be, of course, they may not want to. And to be honest, the biggest single problem is, and I don't have my arms around this one, is Kansas City. I'm not sure Kansas City, I'm not sure there's a world in which Kansas City would agree to go on to our consolidated dispatch. I assume they will always want to run their own system. I've not found a carve out in the statutes yet for that, but again, it's, you know, it's a fairly involved statute. So I've been working through it. The problem is clear. The fix is less clear, because the legislature has definitely tied this fix, all the options of fix, to consolidated dispatch. And right now, we've got kind of a working agreement with three of our eight entities, I think it's Clay County, Liberty, and Gladstone, on kind of, I guess, co-location, which isn't full consolidated dispatch, but they're at least in the same room, and it feels like that's not too much farther to get to consolidated dispatch. It's the other five that we're not there yet. And again, the elephant in the room is probably going to be Kansas City. So, sorry for the long explanation, but I agree, it's a problem, we understand the problem, we're, we need more money. The legislature has given us avenues to more money, but has also kind of put some real ticklish restrictions on how we get there.
We also do have enabling legislation for Clay County specifically to do a consolidated dispatch that was passed about three years ago, or somewhere in that range.
Yes.
So that might be something that we would want to take a look at and see how that would apply to the issue that Commissioner Lawson had pointed out. Let me go ahead and go ahead to Commissioner Johnson.
So a couple of clarifying questions, just so I understand you right, you're saying that we cannot do this $1 per phone fee unless we go to consolidated dispatch? Is that correct?
That is my reading, so, let's see.
And that's because the legislature, the state legislature is pushing for consolidated dispatch?
Yeah, so under subsection 11 of 190.455, no county or legally authorized entity shall submit a proposal to the voters of the county under this section, or section 190.335, which is a different one that we've talked about, until either, and it gives three options. And one is that we've got a consolidated, that it says all providers of emergency telephone service within the county are consolidated into one public agency. Doesn't even mean cooperatively working together, it says one public agency, as defined in the statute. That's one option. The other is, the other two options really talk about a plan in place that at most has to be implemented to get there into one agency within 18 months. We either have to have done, or we have to have a plan that is really moving forward, is the way I'm reading it.
So they're talking about consolidated dispatch that consolidates the entire county into one dispatch?
That's what it says, that's my reading.
And there's counties that do that?
Well, I think smaller counties certainly could, because they probably only have one to begin with.
It just baffles my mind that the
What's that?
Baffles my mind that the state legislature would put that into law, just merely the fact that, I've run the dispatch center before, and I've looked at consolidation, and I'll tell you what, consolidation is not for everybody. It works well for some agencies, but not for all, and it's not a one size fits all, and that's pretty frustrating. I guess the longer I'm here, the more frustrated I get with the state legislature about the mandates they put on the counties, which stay out of our business, is my thought, but there's no way we're going to get to a completely countywide consolidated dispatch, there's no way.
If I might, I have a question on that second part, about, it refers to something of the nature of a shared services agreement. And I guess, let's look at Jackson County, I can't imagine, Jackson County, I mean, the key thing is getting approval from the 911 Service Board.
Wait, so Jackson County has this, this $1?
They do.
But they don't have consolidated dispatch?
They've got, so interestingly, and they would be the ones I'd want to really check into, because there's only one county under this statute that was required to put it on in front of their voters. And the way I'm reading it, it's almost certainly Jackson County. It's a first class charter county with a population between 600 and 700,000, I think that's Jackson. So the legislature, for some reason, mandated that Jackson put it in front of the voters by November of 2020.
I guess my question is, you know, why do we have the Mid-America Regional Council cooperative 911 system if, you know, so yeah, I'd be curious to see, you know.
So yeah, I think there's a lot more work to be done to try to get there, a lot of questions, because one of the things, this was a 2019 statutory rewrite, and the legislature made it very clear, I mean, at some, I was trying to find it, I didn't find it quickly, the public policy of the state of Missouri is consolidated dispatch. I mean, they put it in writing, this is the public policy that we will pursue, and that's why they then throw in funding mechanisms to get counties to do it.
Yeah, that one size fits all mentality just does not work in that situation, and you got people making those decisions who have never run a dispatch center before, don't understand that, it's frustrating.
Yeah, if there's not a workaround, in my mind, if there's not a workaround Kansas City, I'm not sure there's any scenario where Kansas City signs on to Clay County's dispatch.
No.
I mean, I just can't imagine.
I'm not sure we want to consolidate with.
And I don't know that we'd want them.
Yeah, I don't know that we'd want to have consolidated dispatch with.
So.
I can't imagine one consolidated dispatch for the entire Clay County, that just, I can't see that even, even for a moment functioning properly.
Yeah, that's the way I've read it, when I've gone through it.
If anybody's worked in dispatch, it's just, there's no way. But I have a couple of other questions. So let's say this were to happen, this is to you, Victor, so the money can only be spent, and you mentioned it before, but can you be more specific on what this money can be spent on?
It's pretty generic, I mean, it's restricted, of course, so it needs to be spent on all things 911, 911 services.
So that includes sellers for dispatchers, training, the electronics, the
The way I see it, if I look at that, if I look at an invoice that comes across my desk, or we're making payments out of that, then yeah, I think it'd be
So we certainly wouldn't have any leftover money then from, is this additional 3 million?
It would provide, you know, not only the current general fund subsidy of a million dollars, just to make, to cover our bills with the agreement, but if you covered, you know, dispatch services at the sheriff's fund, then you would have even additional savings.
So I would love to be able to pursue that, I just don't know how we go over those roadblocks. I'll tell you that the, so the cost for the 911 system, the 911 system itself is, as we go away from landlines and have more mobile phones, obviously that dollar amount's gone way down, but the number of mobile phones is much greater than the number of landlines, and the number of steering on 911 is much, much greater. The calls for service, or the 911 calls, probably any dispatch center across the nation is going to have increased exponentially since 2000. I mean, huge numbers, if they go, my house alone, we went from one landline to five cellphones, actually we have both. And so most houses, it's individuals have their own phones, not just one landline for the house like it used to be. And so the need for 911 goes up tremendously, the number of people calling 911 has gone up tremendously, and yet the fees to pay for 911 has gone down tremendously. And I think we need to rectify that, and I think this is one solution, but I just, we need to figure out how we get around that, because that just doesn't make any kind of sense. And like Commissioner Lawson, I'd really like to pursue this and see how soon we can get there, if we can get there, and the sooner the better, but it doesn't make sense, those limitations that we have.
Yeah, one other thought I would maybe add is, if you start with the belief that this requires countywide consolidated dispatch, what that means is, all the eight PSAPs would then not have to fund their own PSAPs, and it becomes a new public agency, which is what the statute seems to want to get to. So we would raise more money, but it's not going to be just the county's savings, it'll be every PSAP, so that new agency is going to be much bigger than what the county currently has, and the expense of that new agency is going to be much bigger. So So you're going to increase some revenue, no doubt, but you're going to increase some expenditures, and I can't tell you off the top of my head if it's, if it's still going to be running in a deficit, and if it were to, I'm not sure where that funding comes from, because again, it's a new agency. And again, from my side of the table, our side of the table, again, this was something the legislature addressed recently in 2019, fairly in a substantial way. You know, it may need some more tinkering, too, legislatively. The answer might be in Jeff City, to try to get this thing put into a, a better posture for us to actually take advantage of.
Do you happen to know what Jackson County does, where the funds go to, who gets those funds?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how Jackson County's set up. Now, I will say also, the statutes, again, they, they presume the creation of a new public agency. They also presume the creation of a new public agency board that in most instances would be separately elected, appointed initially by the county and then separately elected.
Is that referred to the sales tax or the subscriber fee?
What's that?
Is that in reference-
It's at least, at least two of the three options have that result, as I recall, and I didn't dig into all of it, but at least two of the three did.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Commissioner. So just to address some of your concerns, I hear you. I could tell you, having been down there during that time, this is an issue that goes back many years. By the time, it was, is it 2018 or 2019 that we passed it?
It said 2019 when I was reading it, but it might have been, it might have come up in an earlier session as well.
Well, it absolutely did, I mean, I, it went back to, all the way back to Commissioner Nolte's time, even, even before me.
Well, not quite VC, but yes.
And so, you know, for what it's worth in terms of, you know, who was pushing it and advocating for it, I mean, it was a whole cross-section, a whole litany of the professional law enforcement organizations that advocated for consolidated dispatch for years, as well as some of the local government-type organizations. So it is, maybe they got it wrong, I don't know, but I'm just telling you, they've, they've been pushing it for years, I know they were pushing it, you know, even before my time in the legislature. In terms of though, you know, if, for some reason, it's not workable in Clay County, I think, yeah, it's a good point that there's always ways to amend laws to make things more workable. So I, I do think that we need to do it, obviously, as we move away from landlines, you know, we need the funding. And I think this would be a smart thing to do. I do have one question. If we generate more revenue than we need, what, what does, how do we dispose of those funds?
Well, it'd be restricted, so I imagine you would have to stay in the fund.
Just stay in the fund.
Continue to get career interests, I mean, it, it's interesting, you know, on the Mid-America Regional Council, an issue came up, they had an expensive item that they needed to cover, and so they went to Jackson County and they just covered it. So, you know, you can build a reserve and plan and do capital projects, you know, planning, so that, if, if there weren't to be a need, and, and, you know, certainly, I would think there would still be a partnership, again, with municipalities, I don't think you would all be on the county, but yeah, if a legislative need, fix needs to happen, then absolutely, we should, we should pursue that.
Yep, got you. Thanks.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, a couple of things. It says in there, if I understood you correctly, that you have to at least start the procedure, correct? The consolidation.
If, and I'm going to focus on the 455 statute, because there's some difference between the three, but the 455 statute would say that you have to have a plan started, you have to have a plan. The plan has to be implemented within 12 months of passing the tax.
With how many, how many?
12 months.
Oh, 12 months.
And then there is a language in the statute that allows for one extension of six months, but then there's also language that says, and no more than one extension. You get one and only one, is the way I read the statute.
Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, what, what we're doing with Gladstone today, is that really a consolidation or just a co-location? Okay, so it's just co-location?
It is, yeah.
Yeah. I, I just, this blows my mind that we would have to do that and be able to do it within a year, that, that just the government, and they're here to help us. I would really like us to investigate that, if there's some way that we could do that, maybe at the state level, and, and talk to somebody and say, okay, what's the workaround? You know, is this it? And here is our need, and I don't know if there's any options open to us, really.
Well, I would think the, to me, the starting point is, let's reach out to Jackson County.
Okay.
And, because they've got the Kansas City problem, just like we do. How, how did you handle Kansas City? Then they've got, they've got to have more PSAPs than us. They've got Blue Springs, they've got Lee Summit, they've got Independence, those are all big agencies.
Yeah.
And how, how, how did you work around those?
Good point.
And get that answer, because it may be that they all just said, yeah, we're, we're happy to give up our PSAP if, if you guys will run the show and we don't have to pay for it anymore. Or they may have, they may have figured out a workaround or worked with the state board to, to get the approval they need. So to me, the Kansas, or, excuse me, Jackson County is probably the starting point.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. Well, we need to get that done, whatever, whoever, or whatever, and maybe he could call and talk with Jackson County, and, I don't know. I think you deal with the, with the gentleman that's over the 911 for Mark, do you not?
I, I, yeah, I've communicated with him, yeah.
Yeah, maybe he could put you in touch with, I mean, I'm not telling you to do it, I'm saying it might be an option for, for you, or whoever.
Administrator, sheriff, and-
Okay, that'd be great, too. Yeah, whomever. Okay. Great, thank you very much for the report.
Commissioner Withington?
Yeah, hey, so is the, is the $1 per phone number, cellular number, or is it per device? Because, you know, you've got smartwatches you can make phone calls on, tablets, would those, would those fall under the $1?
I've had a lot of questions on that, and council can, you know, clarify if, if needed too, but I mean, my understanding is it's per line, per phone number, because it's not over the internet. So, I mean, there are numerous devices that can over Wi-Fi call 911 and only do that, so that would not be taxed as a device, is my understanding.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Three things, devices, specifically, because there's a lot of language about that. Is the three things included on?
From the state?
Yeah.
Three percent.
Yeah. So, yeah, there's a lot of language in the statutes about what qualifies as a device for purposes of the statute.
And that is true, I mean, that's one of the things that was during my time, back, way back when, that, that was discussed, was what is a device? And even to the point of if we do identify it by phone number, there are a number of people who have relocated here from other places, and when, when I get their phone number, it shows up for, you know, another, another state. And so tracing them is not going to be any, any small feat. The other thing, and I don't know if Commissioner Carpenter had the same experience, I was on local government, and that was where a lot of this legislation would come through. This kind of consolidation, among others, was always highly controversial. There was almost always a municipality or two who would come down and say, this is terrible, we can't do this. If you really want to have fun, go into school district consolidation, then you'll really have a good time. But I, I think that's really something that we need to be investigating. Part of the issue is also, there was, there was, there have been moves in the past where we would be, I guess, absorbed by Kansas City, possibly in their system, so there's a little bit of concern that we might end up having our system basically, you know, done from Kansas City, and the rest of us would join in. It gets, but it gets very convoluted, very difficult, and I, I think, but the thing is, this is an issue that needs to be addressed. Just because it's complicated doesn't mean it is a problem without a solution. Whether we can get, what, I think what we need to do is really come up with a comprehensive look at where we are at as far as what are our available options and what we would need to do to pursue each one, and then from there, as a commission, consider those options with the advice of staff, and then start pursuing whatever seemed to be our, our most likely option, because we are, the, the 911 is tied to landlines, that is obviously a declining source of revenues, and we're looking at an increasing expense, so that's, that's been that way for a very long time, but it's nothing but a recipe for disaster. And so I, I think that we need to get a little bit more information. I'm a little bit, I don't have an absolute clarity in my mind, except what I just said as far as tasking staff to do something. I'm not, I'm not sure, can anybody help me out on what, if, if we are to task staff to go forward on this, what would that task be? And I would like to, if, if we do that, I think it should be something fairly focused, because this is, this is an issue that staff could run down rabbit holes all day long. So I, I think we need to come up with, it might be a good idea to come up with some kind of a, what would be a reasonable start on this without, like I say, just eating up staff time to where there's, there's nothing else that they can spend it on. So Commissioner Lawson, I believe you have some thoughts to share?
Yeah, well, I think exactly what our county councillor said, if, if our administrator is willing, we could have her contact Jackson County and see how they, just a, a starting point, you know, and, and then from that point, maybe they'll give us some phenomenal information that we can run with, but at least that's a point to start with.
So my suggestion would be, the county councillor continues digging into the state statute and outlining, you know, the opportunities and challenges underneath that. We'll reach out to Jackson County to say, how does that work? Because I do know that there are municipalities in Jackson County that have their own PSAPs. So they are not truly consolidated as a county, so how, how is that working, and how did, how did that accomplish? So we can look at all of those options. And then, if there are roadblocks for us, what are the options to get around those roadblocks and present to the commission, here are the options, which could be anywhere from, you know, talking to municipalities about consolidation versus a workaround similar to Jack, whatever Jackson County has, to possibly talking about going to Jefferson City and changing state legislation. So I think that's kind of where we are, it's going to take a little bit of time to get through all those options for you, but I think we need to have a good basis of, really, what does the statute say? How is Jackson County operating? And then I think we can put some plans together for you all to consider, what are our options and how do we get there?
So the way forward might be just to get our legal options first off, see where those lead us to, and then when we, if we are able to kind of see a path that we want to go forward on that, then it becomes a staff issue on how to implement that. So initially, it would, it would be maybe a legal advice on what our options are, is that what you're saying?
Correct, along with sort of practicality of how does Jackson County work? You know, I think-
Right.
Yeah, right. Because I do think, you know, the other aspect of it is, you know, the financial piece of it, because I agree with what the councillor said, is if it really has to be consolidation, then it's not just absorbing our costs, then now you're talking about a much larger staff for a consolidated dispatch to do a county-wide, and so I think we would really have to look at that and see what does that look like. The numbers up here, we're just assuming, you know, county dispatch and county 911, but if it's consolidated, then it looks completely different. And I've had conversations with Excelsior Springs about, they're struggling with the same issues that the county is, they're having to subsidize their 911 costs. They are the only city in Clay County that is separate and has their own 911 costs. So they're willing to sit down and talk with us, whatever that looks like, we just need to know what the options are. So it's good that we've had some preliminary discussions with them, because I think under the statute, that is one other item that would be a roadblock, is if there is an entity in the county that has its own 911, then it stops the county from doing anything. So we have to have a partnership with them regardless of some of the other hurdles that we have.
Excelsior Springs, is it included in your county, or is it just Jack from the Clay County side?
You know, I don't know about Ray, but I do know that it's specifically Clay. We, we-
They're a pack.
They are, correct, yeah.
I would expect they dispatch on both sides. Yeah, right?
But I was wondering how that would affect consolidated dispatch, because Lawson's hat and I've lost them.
Commissioner, I haven't been able to recognize you, because you didn't chime in here. I'd like to go with, with Commissioner Carpenter and Johnson, and then come back to you, if that'd be okay.
Okay.
Okay. By the way, North Kansas City also, I think they partner with Kansas City, but I'm not sure.
They have their own PSAP.
They do?
They do.
Okay, I wasn't sure exactly what their structure was. Commissioner Carpenter?
No, I don't have much to add. I, you know, you were looking for consensus for direction, you know, and I think absolutely reaching out to Jackson County, and they have recently gone through this experience, so, you know, if, if they've found a way to make it work, then theoretically that means that we ought to have a path as well. And so I think starting there and going forward makes sense.
Commissioner Johnson?
Just to clarify that we're speaking the same language, when they talk about consolidated dispatch, they're talking about one single PSAP for the entire county?
I think even more than that, the way I'm reading the statute, they're talking about creation of a new public agency that is run by a separate board that then administers the dispatch.
That one single dis, that one single PSAP.
It's a creation of a new governmental entity.
For those at home, PSAP is a public safety answering point. When you call 911, it goes to PSAP. Right now, if you call 911, you're in Liberty, it goes to, Liberty has their own PSAP, right?
Yep.
If you're up in Excelsior Springs, Excelsior Springs has their own 911, or PSAP. There's several, how many are there in the county, do we know?
Eight.
Excelsior, Liberty, Clay County, Gladstone, Pleasant Valley, Clay Como, North Kansas City, and Kansas City.
So what it would create then, what they're suggesting is that anybody, no matter where you are in the county, if you call 911, whether on your cell phone or your landline, it's all going to go to one single location, and they're going to have to deal with the issue and dispatch.
And dispatch.
And that's for police, fire, anything you call 911 for.
Yes.
Police, fire, pretty much anything, it's all combined in one.
Yeah.
That's a tough one.
And if I could maybe make one more inquiry of the commission, just kind of, this is more of a global timing issue. We're mid, we're between major election cycles, right? 2023 is not a major election cycle. It, the questions that are being raised would be pretty aggressive to get them answered and come up with something ready to put on a ballot this August, which would be the deadline for this November, and if we did it this November, we would have to call our own special election, which would cost the county about a quarter of a million or more, is my understanding, because we'd probably be the only thing on that election. So I, I just want to get a sense if that appetite is out there to maybe push something through very quickly that would, where we'd be looking to put it on this November and bear those costs? Or are we looking to, if we put something on the vote, to the voters, which all these options would have, are we talking about 2024?
In my opinion, I think because of the cost involved, I would, I would look at 2024 myself, that'd be my own personal viewpoint, not to mention the fact that we are dealing with an issue that has a fair amount of complexity to it, so it's, I mean, just, you know, forgetting the expense for a moment, just the idea of putting something together, if we end up partnering with another entity like Jackson County, that is a whole nother layer of complication on how we would negotiate that territory. So it's hard to see how we would get a November ballot, but I'm, I'm open to it if someone sees a path.
I tend to agree, I just didn't want to get to early August, and somebody said, hey, we're ready to put it on the ballot. I mean, this, this has enough to it that I'd like to have just that minimal direction as we're starting to work on it.
Let me go ahead and go to Commissioner Withington, and then I'd like to go ahead and see if that is the consensus of the commission before we go forward. Commissioner Withington?
Sorry for cutting the line, John. But have we, have we brought in this, I think we need to bring the sheriff in on this conversation too, see, get his thoughts and everything.
I've been texting with him throughout the meeting, yes. I agree 100% that the sheriff needs to be really involved.
That's a, that's a great point, because when we did work on the legislation that got in place, at that time Sheriff Fescovo was, was absolutely involved very heavily, not to mention police chiefs of some of the municipal departments here in Clay County. So just to kind of round this thing off, as far as a consensus of where we want to go then, so we're looking at getting our legal options kind of organized in a, a form that we can, can really study them out. The, we'd also be reaching out to Jackson County and see what methodology they've been using, perhaps with an eye to cooperating with them, depending on how the lay of the land is. And thirdly, are we thinking in terms of, unless something else comes up, are we broadly looking that, at a, a possible action in 2024 as opposed to this year? Is that, does, do all commissioners pretty much agree that that's what we're saying? Commissioner Johnson, let me hear your views.
Yeah, so I think a lot of, there's too much unknown right now in regards to the August thing. Certainly August would be pretty aggressive. I understand there's an issue with, you know, a quarter million dollars for us to put it Certainly, August would be, um, pretty aggressive. I understand there's an issue with, you know, a quarter million dollars for us to put it on that election. But when you look at the return on investment, quarter million dollars is going to make us three million. I'll take that return on investment. Obviously, if it passed. I don't know that we'd be able to put it on the, on the, I guess the question for me is, what hoops we'd have to jump through? And would we even be able to get it on the ballot in in August? And if it's, if it's an issue where, yeah, we can get on the ballot in August, it's plenty of time, and if three million comes to Clay County, that's a gamble I'd I'd be willing to take. But if it's something where, no, it's going to be consolidated PSAP countywide. Um, we don't even know what those numbers are going to look like, how much that's going to save us. I mean, it even costs us more money doing that. If that's the case, then I'm not interested in.
I'm I'm sorry, I may have misspoken. I, what I was trying to say was twenty twenty four would be when we would be looking at doing something like this. I think August is totally impractical. November is difficult at best. And I I, you know, and I I'm not thinking we really want to do this on a special ballot, but when there is already an election going on, that's why I said I I was wanting to see if maybe the consensus was that we would not, if we were to put something on the ballot, we're looking more at twenty twenty four as opposed to this calendar year.
Yeah, and that's why I think, to me, it depends. It depends on this information, you know, what we can find out. If 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 we find out, hey, you know what, we don't have to do this consolidated PSAP. We don't have to, all these things that we thought we had to do. No, it's much simpler than that, and it's easy to get it on the ballot this year, aside from the cost. If that's the case, I would want to take a look at that. And, because I'd, I'd rather have the three million dollars this year than next year or the following year or whatever.
Perhaps, perhaps, perhaps if I say it another way, and that is, we don't anticipate taking action to put it on the ballot in twenty twenty three. Is that, is that kind of satisfy what your concerns are?
I don't think we know. I I I think there's too many unknowns.
How about this? How about if, as we work on it, if the waters part in front of us and we see a very clear path uh, that could put it on the ballot in twenty twenty three, we will come back with that goal in mind.
Fair enough.
Uh, if there, if it, if they don't part for us.
Yeah.
Uh, and I suspect it it's going to be a lot of work. Uh, twenty twenty four seems like the likelier outcome. But if if we come up with a very clear path, we will bring it back. Is that, is that fair?
You get what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Thank you, Moses. So we would, the consensus position would not include any dates, just the two items of getting our legal, um, our legal options in front of us and making some initial contacts with Jackson County to see what the possibilities are there. So that, is that the consensus of the commission? Does staff feel comfortable? And does legal counsel feel comfortable with those instructions?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Uh, that concludes the, um, the second discussion item. That brings us to reports. Administrator?
Yes, there was one report included in your packet, and that's the Auditor's Cash Basis Monthly Report for April twenty twenty three.
Very good. Uh, county administrator comments?
Um, it just briefly, um, the commission will be in the strategic planning meeting um, Thursday, tomorrow and Friday, beginning at nine thirty at the Woodneath Library. And then also, the commission's regular scheduled business meeting will be next Wednesday, May seventeenth, three P M here in the chambers.
Very good. That brings us to, excuse me, Commissioner comments. Um, Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Carpenter? Commissioner Whittington?
Where, where exactly at Woodneath? Is it where we had the candidate questionnaire?
Um, no, that's, um, it is, it is in the next building. Um, it's, um, it's in their community rooms. So where the candidate forum was, um, more like the auditorium.
Okay.
So you'll keep going towards the library.
I know, by the coffee place.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
And, uh, yeah, and I just want to say thank you to Carl and Terry for hosting me out at the highway department yesterday. So thank you, Carl. Was able to go out and watch the crews patch some potholes. So thank you, guys.
Commissioner Lawson.
The only thing I I was going to say was that I had an interesting day yesterday. I I drove a lot of, while you were watching them patch, I was driving around. Um, I had gotten a number of, uh, emails from concerned citizens. So I drove the roads that they were talking about. And Carl was kind enough to sit down with me today and we went over everything. And he's going to do some research and get back with me. So I appreciate that. And, uh, uh, it was, uh, it was an interesting day. I enjoyed it. So that's all I have.
Very good. Um, I just have one thing. We, um, uh, and it's kind of relevant, actually, given the discussion we we just had. And that is, uh, we participate as a county in the zoo district along with Jackson County. We just, uh, had spoken about possible outreach in partnership with them. We have an existing one with the school, uh, excuse me, with the zoo district. And, uh, yesterday was the naming of the Sobella Ocean Aquarium, which will be opening September first. Uh, our participation on that renders some, um, benefit to our citizens. Also, our schools are able to participate uh, as well as other entities, uh, with that zoo taxing district. So that's a, that's a great thing. That aquarium will be opening on September first. Uh, and the other, uh, part of that is, as one of the, uh, two counties in the district, we will be hosting, in fact, the next meeting, which will be in June. And certainly commissioners are welcome to, uh, attend that and to see how how business is done in that. That's something that, um, we've been participating in for some time. So, uh, that's kind of my comments right there. Um, with that.